Good morning. We're going to go ahead and start the MFP public hearing for input on the Minimum Foundation Program for the 2014-2015 school year. Just a reminder for those that are here and those that would like to speak that organizations will be allocated five minutes and individuals will be allocated three minutes. And please state your name and who you're representing when you start so that we can have that on the public record. The first public comment, Dr. Charles Michel. The other clarification is that there's no discussion during the public hearing, no comment from the board. We're mainly taking input from the public and the comments that they would like to offer.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just have a few things if you would. Since this is a public hearing and I was in attendance to most of the MFP Task Force meetings, I just wanted to put on record clarification. One of the things was that during, in the recommendations, it's indicating that $4 million will be included or will be increasing the high-risk pool application process. The question that I have is where will that $4 million come from? One of the things is we want to make sure that no LEA allocations are diminished, and Superintendent White has assured us that that's the case, but no assurances have been given as to where the funds are going to come from. So we want to make sure that there are no agencies or other services that will be impacted by this $4 million increase. Another recommendation that the board is going to be considering at some point is that the dyslexia issue, when there was some discussion about weighting of funding for students with dyslexia, they were going to, they discussed that but couldn't really come to a conclusion because there are a lot of factors that are involved in that. They referred this to the SEEP, Special Ed Advisory Panel. My question then was dyslexia is not, in most instances, related to the special ed population. Most students with dyslexia are serviced under 504 and not under IDEA. So I question if it is the appropriate referral to SEEP. I don't have any idea where it should go, but it's not a special ed issue, so I would ask you to consider that. The other thing is, in the future, if there's any MFP Task Force meeting or set up, I'd like to have some special ed directors included on that because while there was very little discussion about special ed funding on this, in the event that the discussion does actually take place, I believe that you need the expertise of the people that are in the field that are the closest to the utilization and implementation of the laws. So I'm asking that. And finally, I want to say that one of the, it was my impression that one of the main reasons that the Task Force was convened was because the legislature asked Bessie to consider the proposal that you all, that was made about special ed funding changes. While that seemed to be a major factor in the creation of the Task Force, my perception during the course of the Task Force meetings was that there was precious little conversation about that at all. So I'm hoping that no recommendations have been made other than what I witnessed in the meeting, but in the future, I'm sure that this conversation is going to take place. So I'm going to ask again that you include special ed directors in this process because I believe that the conversations would be more effective and more efficient if we were included. And in that, I thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for your input.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Stacy Betts and I am a private business owner of two childcare centers. I have been in early childcare for 17 years, starting out in the East Baton Rouge Parish school system, progressing on to parochial schools, and I have worked in faith and non-faith-based program, profit and nonprofit programs. I have embraced, for the past seven years, the voluntary accountability asked of us as private centers through the Quality Start System, and am thrilled that we have transitioned over to the Department of Ed and fully support all of your efforts in improving quality in early childhood. But as I look at the funding stream, I ask myself a question. I am currently providing care, quality care. I have a four-star center in Zachary. We are licensed for 78 children, and yet I only have six at-risk children in my center. And I ask myself, I am doing what you are asking all centers to do. Why are the at-risk children not at my center? And the simple answer is that the funding for those at-risk children is not there. What has happened over the past five years is a compounded disparity in funding because of the increased cost of quality, and my personal experience is about 20 percent increase in cost, along with the 58 percent decrease in funding, that the at-risk children have been squeezed out, that they are not able to attend high-quality centers. And I see it as our goal, as a common goal, to reach the 71 percent of children from birth to four who are now currently not being served. So what can we do? That is the question. Parents who can afford quality have the choice for quality. Children whose parents cannot afford quality currently do not have that choice. And I come to you today to ask for increased funding for childcare assistance so that those of us who are currently providing quality care and will continue to support you in all of your efforts to increase quality care so that we can reach those children. We have given, we accept the accountability. I look forward to the day that my centers can be assessed and there's a measurable goal of what we have done and how they have progressed into the school system so that they are ready to learn. We know that our window of opportunity is short. From birth to four is that window of opportunity. I ask my state and any board that is capable of making those decisions, I ask of you the accountability that you have asked of me. Fund early childhood. Fund where we get-
Need to go ahead and wrap up your comments, please.
-the most investment on our return. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Chairman, members. My name is Dan Garrett. I am here acting today representing the Baton Rouge Association of Gifted and Talented Students. It is a volunteer-parent association who strives to continue the improvement and expansion of gifted and talented education in East Baton Rouge Parish school system. First of all, you're all aware the current gifted and talented weight is a .6 additional weight. The MFP Task Force looked at all of the weighted funding as part of its review. One of the comments that came out early in the MFP Task Force was some concern that that weighted funding was maybe being misdirected to general fund expenditures and not really applying to the students for whom the weighted funding was directed. There is a, since 2009, there's been a state law that requires school districts to actually file a report indicating the amount of weighted funding they receive in the various categories and how those funds are expended. We presented that information to the MFP Task Force for our association's concern, EBR actually spends several times more than they receive in gifted and talented funding on gifted and talented services in East Baton Rouge. East Baton Rouge has one of the more robust gifted and talented programs. We have standalone, you know, talented schools. We have self-contained gifted programs. Not all districts can do that. EBR has made a decision to do that. There was a proposal last year to change the way gifted and talented funding was handled in the MFP. The legislature rejected that MFP. We opposed that proposed change. The MFP Task Force did not recommend changing the current .6 weight to gifted and talented education. We would ask that you acknowledge that they did not see a need to change that element of funding and leave it at the .6, or increase it if that's what you choose to do. Because clearly, places like EBR, when I say several times, I mean they're spending about eight times more on gifted and talented education than they actually receive in the .6 weight. So they clearly could utilize the money. They've made a decision that that's what they need to do for their students. The, EBR is not the only program. Baton Rouge is where our association is focused, but there are numerous, very robust gifted and talented programs across the state that are using that funding to maximize those gifted and talented students. And we would urge that you maintain or increase that funding and that there be no proposal in the MFP to reduce the weight for gifted and talented funding. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good morning and Happy New Year, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. Sean Fleming, I'm with the Louisiana Developmental Disabilities Council. Parents and increasingly, school leaders continue to recognize the inequity in funding mechanisms for traditional schools and school choice programs. Parents have requested that all kids be allowed access to all programs. And it's interesting that as I go to meetings, more and more administrators of schools are recognizing that the funding inequities are causing strains on their budgets to provide those services for kids with more significant disabilities. The MFP Task Force was convened when the discussion was here last year to address those inequities, was my understanding. And as a few people pointed out, you know, there's a lot of things with the MFP and I respect the rich discussion, but it's interesting that the two recommendations that came out, one is to use IDEA funding. So I thought it would be relevant for y'all to see patterns-
There is no recommendation on IDEA funding. There was all MFP.
The high-cost fund is from the MFP?
Correct.
I've never seen-
There's already-
Mr. Chair, is this taking out of my time or do I get extra time?
Uh, there's, listen, we'll stop the discussion, Sean.
I'll just say there wasn't any discussion.
We'll give you an extra 20 seconds.
Thank you. Well, Superintendent White brings up a good point because in the records that are existing today is there is a high-cost fund being in the state set-aside funds and IDEA funds. I've never seen in the MFP a set-aside for the high-risk pool, and maybe it's in there and it's just not visible to the public. And that's what Dr. Michel had brought up, is what's going to give if that money is taken away? So I went and I just looked at and thought if it is from the IDEA fund, because there is a high-risk fund line item on the IDEA budget, so either those data were inaccurate when they were disseminated previously, or it's being pulled from the state fund. The question is, what's going to give when that high-cost fund is moved? And I don't think it addresses, it still does not address, as some people point out, kids who almost reach that threshold of three times the average cost. If it's not an IDEA, I respect the fact that it shouldn't go to SEEP, the Special Education Advisory Panel, but that was a question on my head after, you know, I figured that is where it should go. I would, I would ask for the department to clarify my numbers because I've used these from things that were disseminated in various meetings over the years of the IDEA set-aside money. And I guess I would like, you know, for transparency in revealing where in the MFP fund that set-aside money and how it's distributed. Right now, there's no record of which schools get which money, and I think that's a valid question to ask. I've talked to some directors who've indicated they've made requests and didn't get it. I also heard from department staff that only about half of the requests were honored. All of them collect, you know, if someone asked for $100, they got 50. So there does seem to be a need to put money in, but as we increase the number of choice opportunities, that imbalance is going to continue to increase, and I'm not sure doing an exception to the rule is the way to go. And I guess that's what we were asking initially, is we need to look at how the distribution is done on the front end, not the back end. The other part was the whole question of dyslexia on the table, and dyslexia is not a classification under IDEA. Some students with dyslexia do meet the standards to be classified as special education, but there's two issues with that. One is going into using a disability type, if you will, and strangely, it's a disability type that's fairly mild, and so mild it doesn't even typically meet the standard for a disability classification under IDEA. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Margot Phelps, Citizens for One Greater New Orleans.
Oh, sorry, I just wanted to get, um, I'm Margot Phelps, Citizens for One Greater New Orleans Education Committee, and I would like to defer my time to Melanie Bronson-
Okay.
-who we support.
Okay, thank you. That's just some time delivery there.
Oh, is it right out there?
Is there, on the interstate? Glad you made it. So Melanie, will five minutes suffice for both groups?
I'm going to try, I'm going to talk a bit faster. But that's, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Ashon, I'm Melanie Bronson.
Thank you. I'm Melanie Bronson, the Director of the Policy Institute at the Louisiana Partnership for Children and Families. Mr. Chairman and members of the board and superintendent, thank you for the opportunity to testify today. We are the partnership, a nonprofit organization, that seeks to be an independent source of data, research, and information for policymakers as yourselves, for other stakeholders, and for the public at large, around issues related to young children birth through age four in our state. I would like to add also, the United Way for Southeast Louisiana asked me to tell you they also are in support of these comments. They weren't able to come today. As y'all know well, Act Three was passed by the 2012 legislative session, the Early Childhood Education Act. I wanted to remind you today that one of the major components of that act was to create an accountability system for our early childhood programs. I am thrilled to report that that accountability system is now being implemented across the state. I'm so proud of our programs that they have stepped up to the plate and voluntarily, at this point voluntarily, in anticipation of when it will be mandatory, been implementing that system on the ground with, through hard work every day, in the centers and in the classrooms, in the pilots, which are ever-expanding across the state. I would like to suggest that now the ball is back in y'all's court. The accountability system is being implemented, but none of the state programs now is currently funded at the cost it takes to provide them. There are furthermore, great disparities in the funding among the different programs. And if you recall, the point of Act Three, the noble goal of Act Three was the recognition that there are all these different early childhood education programs in our state, that they are disparate in standards and disparate in funding, and we needed to put them all together under your jurisdiction and try to align the standards, improve the standards, and make them accountable for the public funding. Today, we seek your support to provide a secure, sustainable, and adequate investment in these programs so they can actually meet the standards that we have set. Unfortunately, the way they are currently funded, that is not possible. If you look at page two of the handout that I, that I gave y'all, I assume you've gotten, it shows the cost of the programs according to our cost modeling and the actual public funding that's being received. You can see for LA4, it's about 70 percent of the funding is being covered by the public funds that they're receiving. For childcare assistance, it's twenty, less than 27 percent. So I repeat that. For the programs trying to provide the childcare assistance program, which is under your jurisdiction now, they are only receiving public funds equal to about 27 percent of the cost that it takes to provide that program. You heard the provider earlier saying the result is that the opposite of what we intend by Act Three, the most at-risk families cannot access the high-quality programs because the parents are supposed to make up the difference. So what is my point today? My point today is that, as on page one there, what I hope is that y'all will consider, and I ask you and beseech you to consider, that we have a secure, stable, and adequate investment funding of our early childhood programs, that we do not set them up for failure based on the standards and the accountability system that we've created under Act Three. How can we do that? Well, LA4, so you understand, is currently being funded not through the MFP. And frankly, as an advocate who's worked on this for years, every year, we're fighting to try to keep the amount of funding in LA4 that we currently have. This year, we went down a little. National report came out last week and we recited as only, one of only three states where we decreased funding for our pre-K. Every year, it's a challenge. It used to be all state general funds, and again, that's just a general appropriation. It's not part of the MFP. Now, half of it, holes had to be plugged, half of it is being funded by a town of block grant. Frankly, that town of block grant, that money, used to go to childcare assistance. Now it goes to LA4, and childcare assistance has been reduced by 58 percent over the last five years, the amount of funding. So we're sort of robbing Peter to pay Paul, year after year, in the early childhood realm. I would like to suggest today that we consider putting LA4 into the MFP for at-risk children, just at-risk children, because frankly, the research shows that for our dollar, you get the most bang for your buck with the at-risk kids, and so we need to take care of that first. If we can expand some, day fabulous, but at least for our at-risk kids, to put LA4 into the MFP so that we have a sustained, secure source of funding. And then we could transfer those town of block grant funds back to childcare assistance and so that we have more secure funding for that program as well. I sit here through y'all's meetings, frankly, I'm always grateful I'm on this side of the dais and not having to make the tough decisions that y'all have to make day after day in your meetings. I know there's not enough of funds for everything that we need to do, and y'all have to make very tough choices. But I'm here today to plead that early childhood education, more and more and more, the research in every single field of science shows that the best bang for our buck is early childhood. That is when 90 percent of the brain development happens, that's when it's cheapest to fix every problem, and that is when we get the greatest return on our dollar. Y'all have had the happy situation that all of that is now under you. Your legislature has seen fit to put you responsible and jurisdiction for all of these programs to you. I know it's complicated and new to you, all these block grants. I am thrilled, as I have with some of you already, to meet with you and, you know, give you any information that you need to understand them. But the bottom line is, I hope that you will consider putting the MFP, putting into the MFP LA4, raise the amount a little bit at least, so it more approximates costs for our at-risk children, so that it's stable, and then to shift the town of block grant funds currently in LA4 that used to be in childcare assistance over to that program so that we can have secure funding in both programs, and it will at least go a long way to get us going down this path. Thank you. I don't know, was that five minutes? I'm excited if it was-
No, actually, that was right about nine.
Oh, great. Oh, nine! Oh, my gosh, well, thank you for the extra time.
Yeah, thank you for your input.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Good morning, Chairman Guyot, Superintendent, Board members.
Morning.
Thank you for the opportunity to testify this morning. Would like to start by applauding the efforts of the MFP Task Force, the many hours and special effort that went into developing the recommendations that we feel are very valid, especially the unrestricted 2.75 recommendation to local school districts, the increased funding for career and technical education courses, and most importantly, the, the funding that is proposed to flow to courses outside of what normals, of normal courses that school districts are able to offer. And we would hope that as you develop the resolution, the actual instrument that you will forward to the legislature, that you take the utmost consideration into those recommendations and incorporating those into the resolution itself. Further, we would ask that all legal requirements associated with the resolution be thoroughly vetted prior to it being sent to the legislature to ensure that we have a legal MFP resolution that meets all the standards that are required, and that if there's any statutory changes that are needed surrounding the flow of money, of MFP dollars, to courses like dual enrollment and career and technical education courses, that those statutory changes are recommended as part of the, the resolution process that moves forward to the legislature. We appreciate your work. We appreciate the effort of what you do as elected and appointed officials responsible for public education in Louisiana, and we're looking forward to a resolution, an MFP, final MFP resolution, that moves forward to the legislature that we can all support and that will benefit the students of Louisiana. Thank you.
Thank you for your input.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Happy New Year to each of you. I'm coming to clarify my vote on, on the committee and, and our organization's position. I think that the vote, the way it was taken, should have been divided out because there was much about the recommendations that LAE could support, but we did end up voting against it because of a couple of things that we were against. First of all, let me say that I, even though there is some concern about the high-risk pool money, we do believe that that is an important part of the recommendations, and we would be in favor of such expenditure of money because our children, who are the neediest, have a right to a, an adequate education, just like any other child. Also, the technology piece, LAE is very much in favor of making sure that our school systems are technology-ready, especially with the new tests that will be coming up in, in future years. We do however, find some things that we were disappointed in. The 2.75 percent increase obviously needs to be continued. We do however, feel that, that the 2.75 percent needs to be on a per-pupil basis, and also that we were disappointed, and, and we do understand that there is so much that our school systems are responsible for providing for our children, that, and that the funding has not been there in previous years, past five or six years, and that there's a lot of catch-up to be done. But we would hope, and we were disappointed, that there was no provision that our teachers, our educators would be receiving some of that funding. This year, they were giving half of the 69 million in the form of a stipend. And when that stipend goes away, it will feel as though they have gotten a pay cut. And I understand that it was one year, and our teaching force understands that as well, but the fact remains that it will feel like a pay decrease. The career education, we do support. That in conjunction with choice, course choice, excuse me, which I think will be, those two will kind of go hand in hand. Some of these providers will be, be providing the career education. The only problem that we have with that, and is probably the biggest problem, is that the MFP, when we went to court, was deemed as public funding for public city, parish, local institutions, and I know that that's going to be- And I know that that's going to be sent through the school systems. So technically, it's not a breach of the Constitution. However, I do believe that the money is going to just simply go through one extra channel, and so the money will end up where the court said it should not. We believe that our school systems should be given the chance to put together these courses and give their teachers the training that's needed to provide these courses within the system. I know that Vermillion Parish with the DCL is looking at pulling together resources from parishes around the state. This is something that hopefully, if we could get our teachers trained, we could provide amongst ourselves. Another portion of the recommendations that I would like to comment on, and I know that it's not going to be something that's going to be considered right now, is the Long Range MFP Planning Committee that will be looking at the MFP as a whole. It states that this would be done by fiscal and financial people and fiscal experts. But I would also, and I've expressed this to Mr. Guiot, wish to see that we have a task force of dedicated stakeholders, that everyone be brought to the table, so that they have a chance to look at the new changes in the MFP that may come down, and actually have a chance to weigh in on them. These are the things that we both agree with and disagree with. And I would like to thank Mr. Guiot for all of your leadership on the committee. We had a good exchange of ideas, and everyone was respected. And thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments and your input. Superintendent White had one comment.
Just to thank you. Ms. Mo, very much for your eloquent comments. I would just simply state that the payments for course providers is a reimbursement to school systems, as it's planned in the MFP. The state has been providing those kinds of reimbursements for some time. I don't want to get into a discussion about it, I just wanted to provide that clarification, Mr. Chairman.
For the record.
Yes, for the record.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mo. Steve Monahan, Louisiana Federation of Teachers.
Good morning, Mr. Guiot, Superintendent White, members of the committee.
Good morning.
Appreciate, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity, as others have expressed, to address the members this morning. I want to do as others have done, because I think it's appropriate to say what happened and say it in a truthful way. I want to express my appreciation for being, to be allowed to be a part of or included in the MFP Task Force. I thought the conversations were rich. I thought they were worthwhile. I think, given the scope or the limits placed on the task force in regard to what was to be accomplished, it went perhaps as far as, in regard to scope, as far as we could go. In particular, Mr. Guiot, and I'm not trying to fluff you up, or you blow smoke in that particular direction, but you did an excellent job of handling the meeting with great civility, and I appreciate that fact also.
Thank you.
So, now you'll have some tolerance when I say some things that perhaps are less than fun. I want to also, you know, acknowledge the obvious, that we were amongst the dissenting vote, as Ms. Mo said. We oppose the MFP Task Force recommendations essentially for two reasons. The first was the inclusion of the course choice, and I respectfully, and I think this is, and I think Mr. White is correct, this isn't the place to debate the facts or to debate legal issues, but we respectfully disagree. We believe course choice is a choice made to place inside the MFP that is going to run afoul of what both public opinion is and also the legal rulings. However, that's old terrain in its lawyer's world. The second is much more personal for us, and it does speak to choice, and given a considerable amount of thought, as President of the LFT, regarding this matter since the task force. And that is the failure to include a fifty percent division of those funds, that's seventy million dollars, to support employee compensation and teachers and school employees. I say that with a great deal of respect for my colleagues who are superintendents and school boards. I understand that over the last five years, given the MFP has been frozen, hundreds of millions of dollars have been lost to school districts. So those that are as old as I am and like film, understand the proverbial Sophie's Choice. That bad decisions have to be made all the time, or decisions you'd rather not make, because you have to keep the doors open first, and then hope you'll have people to staff classrooms later. And that has been the way Louisiana's worked for a long time. Those that work for the coin are the last often to be compensated, particularly those who work on the front line. And I also will say this, and I say this with a great deal of respect. Points were made during the task force that there was still the opportunity of a division to be done at the district level. And I think, in some cases, that will happen. But again, the choices will have to be made. But I would also offer, for your long-term thinking, the only way that really happens is then we have to change our minds about the way we believe employees and employers interface, and we all then ought to walk in the same direction and advocate bargaining for public employees, so that that hundred percent of the proceeds would be allowed to be discussed and collectively negotiated. Otherwise, it's the powerless dealing with those with a smidgen more power. So that is what I kind of object to, and I strenuously object to, in regard to the fact that there will be no real negotiations over how the money will be divided. It will be those that have the authority will have to make the hard choices. So, respect for my colleagues, and an understanding that they're in a difficult place, as well as we all are. But also to understand, and I close with this, because I could go on, there are good things in this MFP formula, the recommendations. But please understand, five years when the MFP has been frozen, that also means teachers have been frozen on salary schedule steps and have not moved as well as other school employees. That means cost escalation have not only come to districts, but to individual teachers in regard to escalation of hospitalization and the rest. It is the American story. As they normally say, it's real simple. If you're at the bottom of the hill, the bad stuff kind of rolls down the hill. And it's having an effect on the teachers and school employees at the building level that's expressing itself in the exodus of more seasoned teachers. Not one issue drives our teachers from the classroom, but a signal from the highest-ranking board in the state that there is no will and no choice to divide these funds, as meager as they are. Last year, and I end with this, thank you, Mr. Guiot, but last year, I close at this, I think I got three, and I'll go three in twenty seconds, if you would allow me.
You've had five.
I have? I apologize for that. I thought I was doing good.
You're doing good.
Okay. I have to close with this. We are making choices. When a choice is made not to compensate, something else is placed as a priority. Teacher salaries, school employee salaries have stagnated. And if they don't move, the teacher's condition is ultimately going to affect learning conditions, because we're going to lose some good people. And we have. So thank you very much for your time. I enjoyed serving on the task force.
Well, appreciate your service and the input that you had. I thought it was very constructive and helpful. Thank you. Superintendent Falk.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, Superintendent White, thank you for the opportunity to make a few comments. Having served on the task force and discussions with superintendents from across the state, we believe that the recommendations being made by the task force to the full board are meaningful, and will have a positive impact on education and school systems throughout the state. There is some discussion, we have had discussions, and our basic points in discussing with the superintendents does direct attention to the resolution. If you recall, and I'm sure you know, the last two resolutions have been declared unconstitutional, had to revert back to the eleven-twelve formula. So now, you have a formula that's going to be considered by the legislature that is completely different than the last two that have been sent. The key factors in developing the resolution, because the resolution drives the distribution of funds, it generates the dollars that are needed, but the resolution is the key. And the two factors are the constitutionality, to fund the minimum program for public education, K to twelve. And the second thing is the equitable distribution of funds. Currently, you have a relative wealth factor that is used for the distribution of funds. That's not going to change. That's still in existence. Those factors are still there. So, in your deliberations and your consideration, we ask that you pay very detailed attention and careful attention to the wording in the resolution, because that's what's going to be considered by the legislature, and that's what we will be reviewing. There are going to be winners and losers. Doesn't matter what formula you have. So, the thing is constitutional, equitable. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Superintendent Falk. And I would comment that appreciate your service on the task force and the knowledge that you were able to bear from, I guess, going back to the late eighties to early nineties relative to the formula. Thank you. Superintendent Peugeot.
Thank you, Mr. Guiot, and members of the Board. First of all, I'd like to just thank the MFP Task Force, had a fabulous group of people who really brought a lot of expertise to the table, and was one of the most robust discussions of differing viewpoints and perspectives that I've ever been a part of. Certainly want to thank Mr. Guiot and Superintendent White for their leadership through the process, and their reaching out to all the different constituencies until we were able to come to some strong consensus around the recommendations. The superintendents do support the recommendations of the MFP Task Force. As Superintendent Falk alluded to, we've had a lot of discussion across the state with different superintendents, and feel like we've come to a set of recommendations that are good for students and in the best interest of moving school districts forward. Particularly, the unrestricted 2.75 allows that each district take care of the unique needs that it has. For some, it may be technology. For others, it may be the increased retirement and insurance cost. For others, it may be an increase in teacher or employee pay. But I think that, given the stagnation of the formula over recent years, superintendents absolutely need that flexibility in order to kind of catch our breaths and catch up with where we've been. Also, really want to applaud the recommendations around career and tech ed. With the enormous economic opportunity that, an expansion that is happening in this state right now, I think it's going to take all hands on deck in order to prepare the workforce that this expansion requires. And I don't think it's an either-or. I don't think it's either in the high school or through other providers. I think it's both. I think it will take a real ramp up of our high school career and tech ed programming, and wherever it is possible to get teachers who can get the credentials they need and the expertise they need in order to provide this kind of workforce development. But also, sometimes it makes more sense to partner on other types of programming with other entities. And I think having both opportunities in the recommendations are critical to our success moving forward with this strong economic opportunity that we have for our students. So I really applaud both the increase in the career ed weight in the formula, and the opportunity to have additional dollars to partner with other agencies in order to provide training for our students. And so I just want to go on record as really being in favor of the recommendations. And Superintendent White has already reached out to the superintendents for input on the more technical pieces of how we put the resolution together and make all of these pieces work. And we look forward to that continued dialogue as we move forward with getting a resolution. Thank you.
Thank you for your service on the task force, Superintendent Peugeot. It was, you represented the superintendents well and was very helpful in the process. Do we have any other comment calls? That concludes the public hearing, and we'll reconvene Admin and Finance in five minutes.